All right, it's seven o'clock. We'd like to start right out of time here in Harrisville. Welcome, council staff and all those that are listening. We appreciate you being here. We are going to have our legislative lesions that are opening ceremony by Councilmember Steve Weiss.
By our legislative lesions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are the people who are here to discuss the city businesses as before us. We have to be with us as much as we can make right decisions. Do the things that are right for the people of this city. We are thankful for the freedoms that we have. I see bless our leaders at this time, the hardships that we're going through. Be strong, do the things that are right for the people. And we're thankful for all we have.
Thank you. Moving on, I have no three or second items. Item A is approve the minutes of February eight, twenty twenty-two as presented. You all have a chance to look at those minutes? And if so, any changes or anything we need to discuss? Okay, please have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February eight, twenty twenty-two as presented.
I have most of the second Alan paper.
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Item B, advice and consent of mayors of municipal city administrator. You're all aware that we have been without city administrator for about a month. So we put out a a application form. We had interviews and we put Jenny through the ringer and she came out. I told them, you know, have that or make sure she qualifies for this. She had a really good interview, lasted about forty-five minutes and I was met with the interview committee afterwards. They highly recommended her. I'm very impressed. And so with that recommendation and my recommendation too, I would like to ratify my choices during the course of the council. So if I got a motion on that or if you have any questions for us?
I might want to make a motion to ratify the mayor's. The way that I send you, Mr. Jimna.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
And so that's us all. Congratulations. And because of that, we need to administer administer the bulk of office. Jenny, you want to go and stand there and Cynthia's going to give her the bulk of office. Please raise your hand. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend, that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Utah, this Constitution of the State of Utah. And then I will discharge the duties and then I will discharge the duties of my office with the Do you want to sign that? If you could quite sign that?
Yes. She made us all good, so we have.
We are really excited. She's done a great job. Everything you see tonight on our agenda, she has quite a few of the staff. She just jumped right in and got everything done for us. We appreciate that. All right. Okay, now moving on to our business items. Item A is discussion possible action on local government funding options for Seven Fifty West Municipal Complex. So this is what you've asked for council and we've had Marcus Keller from Science Bank be the coach and let us know what we need to do.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, Marcus Keller resides public finance. We were contacted by the city to put together some different options that may be available if you're looking to bond or borrow money for the upcoming projects, which is kind of a longer list here. So we've we've put our best foot forward to show you all the different options, broken it out, given our suggestions. One thing we did notice is that it's been a long time since Harrisville's borrowed money. Haven't had many bonds in the past. So I put together a little presentation. I thought it'd be good just to do a quick run through on some of the intricacies of tax exempt or municipal financing so that you can be aware of that. And then we'll jump into specifically your projects, suggestions and ways that you could perhaps borrow money to to be able to afford those. So that's okay. We'll we'll go through these rather quickly. Again, this is just a refresher, but if you do have questions, please stop me and we can go into more detail on anything you would like to. So we'll go ahead and jump right into the presentation here. So again, just as a reminder, there's a few different options to how a local government or municipality can pay for projects. You can save up and set aside money, typically putting money into your capital fund and then paying for your projects in one large lump sum. You can do a pay as you go. So again, that's kind of hard. A lot of people want to be paid upfront for their project. They don't like a pay as you go basis, but maybe for like a lease or on your cars or something along that nature that allow you to do more of a pay as you go type structure. Grant financing, you know, I know the city's probably received a lot of ARPA money, CARES money. So a lot of this grant financing could be available options for these future infrastructure. Then we'll talk mostly about debt financing. Then any combination thereof. Again, this is just a chart, so I we can send this PowerPoint out afterwards, but just show you the pros and cons. I won't go into much detail on this, but as you know, obviously each one of these are going to have pros and cons. The one I wanted to point out is the con about debt financing is obviously you have an interest payment. You have to pay interest on the money that you borrow back to the investor that buys those bonds. Next slide. What are municipal bonds? So again, this is going to be similar to to any other kind of financing. There's just a few different requirements and steps and issues with this because one nice thing is that when you as a local government borrow money, the investor that lends you that money does not have to pay tax on the interest earned. So you are eligible for tax exempt bonds. So you're usually able to get lower interest rates, better terms than say a commercial loan or something along those lines. So just keep that in mind is that the nice thing that local governments and municipalities, counties, anything that qualifies under that section of the IRS code is that you get tax exempt, which means you get a lower financing rate than most other entities or compared to the public private sector. Next slide. Who borrows money? Again, this is just listing out some of this. We won't go into detail on this, but I just wanted you to know. So if you do get bored or want something to fall asleep reading one night, you can always pull up this PDF and go through it. Next slide. Okay, so there's going to be a couple of different things. We won't go into much of this right now, but typically when you go to to issue bonds, it's different than perhaps if you own a company or if you're going to borrow money to get a mortgage. So if you decided I want to go get a mortgage, you would go to the bank, they'd look at your credit and that would be that. As a government entity, you have a responsibility to inform your taxpayers of how you're issuing borrowing money in behalf of the city. And so there's a special process that you have to go through depending on the type of bonds typically including a public hearing, adopting resolutions. And then obviously making sure that we're getting you the best rates possible. We would discuss in more detail later on down this road whether we do a direct purchase, which basically means that you would go to like a a Bank of Utah or someone along those lines and say, hey, these are the bonds. We want you to potentially put in a bid to buy them. Another avenue that we help a lot of our clients with is either competitive or negotiated sale or actually go and communicate with S and P and Moody's in San Francisco, get a bond rating and then sell it to underwriters across the country. So it's a little bit more of an intricate process, but depending on the size of the bond, you may get a better rate. So it pays to do a little bit of additional upfront expenses to get that done. So I would say a lot of your Ogden Cities, Weaver County, they do both, but typically the larger the bond, they'll do more of a negotiator competitive underwriting. That includes going and getting a rating. That's the really big difference. All right, next slide. Types of bonds. So this is probably one that we might want to spend just a second on. So as a city, you have access to lots of different financing mechanisms. A general obligation bond. So this is a bond where you actually pledge you the property tax of everyone within your city boundaries. And to be able to do that, you have to go out and have an election. So that's the downside. So this is actually known as the most secure, highest rating bond, typically get the best interest rate. But it's it's a little bit sometimes of a nightmare to get an election done, particularly if it's for an item, you know, that people aren't very excited about. You know, some people may always just vote no to finance a police station because they may have some, you may have gotten a ticket or something along those lines. But you know, general obligation bonds are really good for things that may not be necessarily a necessity for the city, but more of just an enhancement to the citizens. So a park, community center, rec center, something that you can say, are the people going to get excited about and be willing to pay a little bit higher in their property tax to finance? That would be particularly something, a general obligation bond. And we'll go into more details on that later because we do have this split up. Utility revenues. So utility revenue would be typically from your enterprise funds, water, sewer, stormwater. You're actually able to bond against those enterprise funds and issue bonds that are backstop or collateralized by that revenue source. So a lot of times you'll see cities or counties issuing a water bond or a sewer bond. And so what an investor is doing is saying, I'm going to issue bonds based off that security. So I've looked at your credit and I know that you'll always have enough money from that enterprise fund to pay me back on this debt service schedule based on what you've shown. And so I've actually broken out some of your projects too, because I did notice there's some public work, some utility projects. And so I've broken that out between your sewer and stormwater funds and kind of shown a combination of that, which we'll get into a little bit later. Excise tax funds. So this can actually be a broad thing, but typically this includes sales tax, franchise tax. And you know, there may be some other additional. Gosh, I forget off the top of my head, but those are the two we noticed that you would be able to qualify within your current budget as an excise tax bond. These are actually considered very secure. The the tough part is is that these are kind of the lifeblood of the city. You you live on your sales tax. So as you bond for it and you pledge revenues, and I'll show you on future slides on this. You're taking away from what's going into your end fund balance. So for instance, we did some just based off your twenty twenty-one audit, we showed that you had a positive fund balance of about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And maybe that's just assets at the end of it, but that's how much you're able to bring from your general fund into your ending fund balance. So if you issued a bond for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars that you had to make a payment for, or at least the debt service payment was for that year, then all of a sudden now you would be at zero. So you wouldn't be able to increase your fund balance. So there's kind of a a give and take, if that makes sense. You got to find the right balance and what you feel like is appropriate. Even though legally you may be able to be able to afford this bond, similar like your mortgage, they'll tell you you can afford a two million dollar home sometimes. Realistically, you know, well, yeah, if I want to, you know, eat ramen noodles for the rest of my life type situation. So you have to find that nice balance, same with city government as well, to figure out what's going to be a good way to keep your city healthy and strong financially, but also maybe be able to utilize debt to your advantage. Lease revenue bonds, capital lease. So this is kind of the alternative to general obligation bond. The difference is when you issue, this is typically done through, I'm not sure if you've heard of municipal building authority, local building authority. It's just a quasi entity of yourself. And so this is a way that if you had funds available, so you said, you know, we have, we do have a great property tax. We have tons of funds in our general fund. And we don't necessarily want to do a bond election because we already have the funds coming in. So through a geo bond, we're going to do a lease revenue bond through our building authority. That's potentially an avenue you could do. The nice thing about the geo bond is it creates a new revenue stream. So I didn't mention that, but that's very important to know. The geo bond, when you get a voted and passed geo bond on there, you're able to levy a property tax each year above and beyond what you currently have. So that's new money coming into the city and it pays for each year. So that property tax changed depending on your valuation and how much your debt service is every year. With a lease revenue bond, you don't generate that new property tax. So you have to use existing funds. So just keep that in mind because it's pretty important as we go into it. The other three, I won't go into much detail, special assessment, tax increment and tax anticipation notes. Those are kind of niche things that you would really do just for development or if you needed money to to kind of finance yourself as you're receiving property tax. So we'll go ahead and skip those three for now. Again, just so you know, since this is kind of your first time looking at bonding in a while, there's a bunch of different parties that get involved when you issue bonds. So you have your municipal financial advisor, that's something that we would be able to help you with. That's science public finance. We have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure you're getting the best terms, best rates, best pricing for the debt that you issue. So we help you find buyers. We help you either go through the public markets, whatever we determine in coordination with you is the best approach to get you the best possible bonding rates. Underwriters council, we won't worry about that. Rating agencies, we've talked about them a little bit depending on which avenue you go. Very quickly, the issuer would be the city, the underwriter would be the purchaser or the buyer of your bond, or I'm sorry, the seller. Some cases in a direct purchase, they actually hold those bonds. If you do a public sale, they actually sell it to the buyer. So they're kind of the ones placing them. Bond council, again, this would be something we could help you procure through just a quick RFP process to make sure again, you're getting great service with a very affordable pricing. Trustee paying agent, we won't worry about that because it may not be applicable depending on the still type. But again, these are kind of the team that helps you go from start to finish when you're issuing bonds. Next slide. Um, I I won't go into this. Let's quickly go through this because I know we want to get to the meat of this. So let's go ahead and skip a few of these slides. Yep, let's keep going until we get to the Harrisville title slide. Perfect. Harrisville Projects. So I've kind of broken out, this is a similar chart as the other one. I've broken out what you could potentially bonding sources you could use to pay for the projects you have at hand. City Hall Administrative Office, I put the amounts they're excited based off the current most updated amounts. And then beside that, you'll see what kind of bonds could we use to pay for this? Just, I won't go through all them, but just so you're aware, so there's multiple options. You could say, great, we want to use excise tax. We want to use a geo bond. We want to use a lease revenue bond. Figuring out which one's going to be the best is kind of a discussion we have to have because as mentioned before, you know, you may have better luck passing a geo bond for a rec center or community center than a police. You know, or or vice versa. I don't know. You you all know your community better than I do. But breaking this out, I said, you know, next last column there is what I would suggest. And this is based off just our experience around the state, working with a bunch of different cities. So for your city hall, police station and public works facility, we said, okay, let's put that under the sales tax, franchise tax. Let's pledge that and see how much we could borrow there. For the rec center and the parks facilities landscaping, we didn't have enough money in the sales tax. So we said, how can we afford this? Great. Let's look at general obligation bonds and go into some detail there. And for your site work and utilities, how can we pay with this for stormwater? Because that's going to be related to those enterprise funds. So maybe we can look to see how much of that it could cover. So then we go into more detail on the next slide, breaking this out. Excise tax revenue bonds. So what we did was we said, okay, let's take their sales and franchise tax combined together. And this would be the revenue source that we would pledge towards the bondholders to issue this. Looking at it, I was talking with our analysts, going through your audits. I said, okay, what? Because for instance, like a a Farmington city gets about eleven million dollars in sales and excise. I mean, they have a lot of it. So so theirs is great. We don't necessarily have to worry about affordability because we get so much of it type situation. With you guys, it's a little different because the projects are so large. I said, you know, what what's the debt service we would feel comfortable doing? So we basically just said, okay, on a twenty-five year bond, let's keep the debt service at six hundred thousand dollars a year over twenty-five thousand years. And how much could they afford with sales tax? And even that's a little bit of a stretch. We may have to narrow that down. We just used that number because your last surplus was six hundred and sixty thousand. So we said, okay, let's let's start there and then we can size it down from there. So we set up a bond of six hundred thousand dollars per year over twenty-five years. Just so you know, you have to have coverage. Coverage basically says after your expenses, and this is more applicable to utility, but basically on the sales tax, it says sales tax plus franchise tax has to be one and a half times that's six hundred thousand. So you would have to have a minimum amount of sales or franchise tax to be legally able to issue this of nine hundred thousand a year, which you guys have. You have quite a bit more than that. But again, there's difference between legal and, you know, reality. So we ran these numbers, the proceeds that you'd be able to generate based off a debt service, current market rates for sales and excise tax would be ten and a half million dollars. So that's how much, you know, that's taking out all the fees and everything else. That's your proceeds. This basically says, if we went and did a debt service based off current parameters, we could have ten and a half million or ten point five eight million dollars in the bank to start building projects. So we pulled the three projects that we thought might be kind of most applicable to this one. And they come out to about nine and a half million dollars, roughly nine point five eight. So a little bit of wiggle room there. So you could potentially downsize the bonds to get closer to that. But these are the three that added up to that amount. And let me just show you some of these analysis here based off the revenue streams. And again, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if it's kind of small here. It ends up being a lot of work, but so typically you'll have a historical coverage ratio. So this is your sales tax, but you haven't had any sales tax bonds. So on the right hand column, so twenty seventeen, you had one point four one three million and then on down one point four nine two. So these are your historical sales tax over the past five years. And then you can see what the growth rate, which has been great, you guys have been growing lots of sales tax, you know, so that's a good thing. We always like to do conservative projections on the latter part, just in case we do have slowdowns in the economy or any hiccups there. So this is your historical sales tax revenue. Not a lot of information because you don't have any outstanding debt on this one, but we'll get into the projected here in a second. Next slide is going to be your franchise tax. Again, this one's been a little bit more up and down there, but again, it would be combined with your sales tax. So I just kind of put in one percent since you had some negative years as well. But that that shows you historically and then projections. And then the final slide is, okay, here's the combination of both of it. And so this would be your pledge taxes on that second to right column there. And so that's your total added up. And then we dropped in the debt service of what that twenty-five year bond would look like. And so again, if you look over and you see your coverage, as I told you before, you're only required to have one and a half times coverage and you're showing four, four point one, four point two. But our goal is to not have you have such a high debt service that now you're running negative fund balances. We want to make sure you're healthy, not struggling on this. And so again, that's why we chose that number. We could size it down as needed. But based off this amount and this project, you know, you would have ten point five eight million dollars on proceeds to contribute towards your projects. Well, as we saw earlier, I think your total project amounts closer to seventeen million. So that's when we said, all right, well, let's get creative. We don't want to burden all their sales tax on this. What what else can we do to break this up? So on the next slide, we said, great, let's look at their franchise or their enterprise funds. So you guys have a sewer and a stormwater fund. This one's a little bit different because you actually only need one point two five times coverage based off credit requirements and the market requirements. But again, we we showed roughly based off this and I'll show you on the next slide here. What would a max debt service payment, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year, twenty-five years, similar bond structure? How much would we be able to generate off that? We came up a little bit short, I think, of the goal, but it would be about two million fifty thousand dollars if you decided to use kind of the terms we're thinking of right now. We noticed that your total project cost for the site work and utilities is about two and a half million. So not quite enough, but at least it's getting us closer to the final amount. Next slide. And so this is your sewer revenue that I put together. If you notice, you'll see at the bottom there, the point seven six, the point eight eight, the one point zero one. That's below one and a quarter. So if we just use sewer, we wouldn't be able to do it. Next slide. This is your stormwater. Again, same same debt service, just using your stormwater under one and a quarter, not able to do it. Next slide. This is your combined. So if we were to issue bonds, we'd have to pledge both revenue sources, both stormwater and sewer as a combined double barrel pledge of revenue. And then then it gets us to that point. But if you look there, you'll notice, you know, based off our analysis here, just probably modest expense increase. We probably could have made that higher just based off inflation, everything else. But just based off this current calculation, you'll see that revenues and expenses available for debt service and the calculation we do is revenues, subtract expenses, add back in depreciation, since that's not technically a real cost. And so that number is how we get to the revenue and expenses available for that service. And then that's how much you would have available to make that debt service, the one hundred eighteen, the one seventeen, the one seventeen again. So you do have money available within your utility fund to potentially bond to to raise again, additional monies for this, but it's not a ton. So things to consider, if you really want to do this, you could potentially do rate increases or or so on and so forth. But we'll get into that here in a second. Next page. And then finally, the general obligation bond. So this is kind of your, how do I find a new revenue stream and and make my hair grow even gray by going through an election type conversation here? So we said, okay, everything we couldn't afford in the other two, let's lump it into this one, particularly the recreation parks projects comes out to about five point four million dollars. So based off twenty-five year, three hundred and five max annual payment with the geo bonds. We'll go to the next slide. One thing to notice, this is the state requirements for issuing geo debt. You'll notice you don't have any debt or geo debt for that matter. So if you look at that middle column that says four percent for other purposes, it shows you based off your fair market value, how much you would actually legally be able to ask the public for in a general obligation election. And so you could technically ask up to thirty-three point eight million dollars for that, but you have to be sensitive to what you think may actually pass an election. And then same with the other one, you actually have a higher authorization over sewer and water and electric. But I would say most cities don't use geo elections for those utility projects just because they have enterprise funds now. So they'll usually just have it that way. So legally, you could issue up to thirty-three point eight million, but right now we're just running it based off the five million that's left over. Next slide. This is how it would impact your taxpayers. So based off that debt service schedule that we put together, how would this impact somebody? Somebody's home, because that's what you'd have to tell them. What's the net impact to my home if I live here in Harrisville and I vote yes for this project? So based off our calculation on the three hundred and five thousand max annual debt service within those numbers, on a fair market value home, the average primary resident, because you're going to get different value between primary and commercial. The primary resident would on a hundred thousand of fair market value would be thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Well, you could typically say fair market value for somebody's home after they get their forty-five percent reduction is probably going to be closer to three hundred thousand, let's say somewhere in that. So you would just times that by three. So you're looking at close to a hundred dollar property tax impact annually for a you know, it'd be close to about five hundred thousand dollar home prior to the reduction. On a business, again, you would just multiply that by three or depending on the valuation of the business, since they don't get a discount on it. So sixty-one per one hundred thousand dollars. So it's a million dollar business or times that by ten. So they would have an increase of six hundred and ten dollars a year on their property tax. And this is for about five million and change of bonds. So I think, next slide. Perfect. Just fed you guys with the fire hydrant here. So so those are the ways that we figured if you wanted to do all the projects, you'd be able to get there. Just remember, the geo bond requires an election, so you wouldn't be able to do something until the end of the year, once that would get voted, assuming they passed at that point. But you could always move those geo bonds into your sales and franchise tax bonds. And you could just, but you'd have to find a way to generate more revenue. I know a lot of people will do that, but to offset that decrease in their general fund, they may do a truth and taxation to increase their property tax. I I did some research and I noticed it looks like you let your levy drop considerably. So it wouldn't be a, I mean, it it's always an impact the way that the the good old legislature makes us report it when you do truth and taxation, unfortunately. But you know, if you kind of pegged it to where you were five years ago, you could raise it, I mean, four or five mils and still probably be under where you were, unfortunately. But you don't get to say that, right? You have to say, hey, here's here's how much we're increasing your taxes, not we're just making it normal again type situation. But so I would strongly suggest if you do something along those lines, you find the revenue somewhere else to bring it in. Same with the utility bonds. If you decide you want to do more than that amount, you would want to look at maybe doing a rate study, see how much you would need to increase rates over the next few years to be able to afford these new capital infrastructures. But That's, that's the analysis. That's the the report. Sorry, it's a lot of information, but it's uh, sometimes it gets a little complicated when you have to look at multiple sources of funding to try to get there. But through that methodology, you could potentially get there. Um, I will say this, can you do the quick market update? Rates jumped up quite a bit over the last few months. They've come back down because of all the international concerns. But I think the biggest thing, it's not necessarily rates that's hurting cities in your position, it's inflation. So a lot of the cities, counties, other entities we work with are kind of doing their projects now just because they don't know what it's going to be in two years. And most likely, it's going to be an additional twenty to thirty percent that it kind of the trend stays. Or unless we get great news and maybe inflation levels back up, but I don't know if anybody's optimistic at this point. So. Did that answer all your questions? I've been talking a little while.
So we have one. So if we were to decide that we were going to do this.
Yeah.
Uh, how long will this take us to to get it?
Yeah, so so if you, if you said, hey, we want to go ahead and get started, maybe just for a portion of the projects with our sales tax bonds. Maybe you said we we prioritize and we want to do ten million with sales tax. I'd say it usually takes about sixty days. So what we do is a city council meeting, we would prepare a parameters resolution that would be adopted by you. It's kind of starting the process. At a future meeting, we'd hold a public hearing to allow the public's input, let them understand how this may affect them. Typically, if it's a sales tax bond, it's really not going to affect them because you're not raising rates or anything. You're just using existing revenues. After the public hearing, then we'd work with you to to get the bonds uh, bid out, secure interest rate. And then we'd work with bond council to get everything closed and the money sent to your account. So I'd say we can usually do it. If it's pushed, we could probably do it in forty five days, but I'd say sixty days is usually the standard.
That's a lot of information.
Yeah.
A lot of, thank you so much.
Yeah. Hopefully it's helpful. I did sit Ginny the PowerPoint, so hopefully she'll distribute it. And if you have any questions, happy to come back or or do whatever you can do to help out.
So council, this is a uh, an item on that we can consider for action if you do want to go ahead and something like this. We can approve that tonight. Someone wants to take. So like you have enough information, if you want to look at that more, they'll be there. Another month before we get to this and the action of this, but it is on the agenda. Do we, Jessica, do you want to pipe in on this at all or? I think you pretty much answered everything unless you have any questions that I can answer. Um, one question I do have is on the phones, if we are able to, there's a payoff penalty for opening playoffs.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So whenever we get these bid out, typically each purchaser will have their own requirements. So some will say callable anytime without penalty. Others may say, I want a five year call protection or ten year call protection. And so we go through all that analysis to say, is it maybe worth the lower interest rate to to call protect it? Or do you want more flexibility because you think you may have some additional money coming in? And uh, yeah, that that, yeah, absolutely. So each each purchaser will will have their own requirements and they kind of go from there. If if I could make a suggestion to the council, because I know this is a ton of information. And you know, I I would just say, if if you do have a a motion or anything, I perhaps just um, working towards the next meeting, because again, it does take quite a long bit of time and we do have to prepare legal documentation if you want to at least start moving with the process. Nine times out of ten, what we can do is just get some documents ready to go for the next one that gives Ginny and the mayor the authority to really just start looking and having authorization. And then we can fine tune these numbers because these are just estimates. So if that's something that's helpful, but you know, wh- whatever you all need or decide, we can work with your city accordingly.
I think what's important also to clarify with, we gave worst case scenario to science for this analysis for the city. We we had Matt Robertson prepare a new cost estimate of what the total cost of this municipal complex would be. And as you're all aware, we have other funding mechanisms that haven't been implemented. So it probably would be wise for us for the staff to gather together and put all the other additional funding mechanisms in place before we know what the total bond that we have to to allow for. We've got uh, the sale, the most recent sale of the public works building to consider. We've got already impact fees for stormwater that are within the window of time that need to be expended. And we have additional, the sale of other additional city properties that we're considering. So to be fair to Marcus, we prepared the worst, we gave him the worst numbers we possibly could come up with to see where we where we came in, uh, if we had to to bond for it. We have grant options as well. We have ARPA funds that we've already earmarked for some of these projects for the public works. But we needed to know the process and also what our financial standing will be if we move forward with with the project as a total versus just the public works element. Justin, did you have?
Yeah, um, coming next month, we've also had science to uh, finalize up the financial analysis for the stormwater impact and the sewer impact. And sewer, you know, it was at zero, it substantially increased from what we've seen. And the storm waters increased also. So any new development, those impact fees will also kind of help with some of the bonding and analysis numbers.
Well, yes, what I've been asking is actually would just clear consent for staff to take take this over and then look at, see what's best for the city, bring it back. Some more information next time.
I make a motion that uh, we authorize our staff to start laying the groundwork for the government bonding options that will have any regards for our seven fifty west municipal complex. Second.
All right, you got covers. All right. Have a roll, uh, yes, I have a roll call on this one. Councilmember Loveland.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus. It's doing what the rest of us. We're trying to get it back on for us. I noticed it was saying it was like five minutes. All right, thank you, council. That was very important. If you stop and take care of that. Item B, this is a discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance five thirty one, which is a land use amendment. Jimmy. So we, as we moved through some of this code and uh, we found in our appeal authority in particular that our code was contradicting itself. In one section, it was the planning commission was the appeal authority. In another section, it was an appointed person by the mayor. And so our effort in adopting and amending this ordinance is to clear that up, to clean it up and not have our code contradict. So it's very clear what our appeal process is. And also we we basically revamped the sections of for the planning commission as well. So in the page looks a little different than I was expecting. So you all had in your packet the the ordinance repeals certain sections under the land use code, particularly eleven dot zero two dot zero three zero, eleven dot zero two dot zero four zero and eleven dot zero two dot zero five zero. When the planning commissioners reviewed this, they had a suggestion that we can review in the planning commission section. It did update. We had it outlined a little differently previously. Now the planning commission can be composed of between three to five members and alternates as necessary. And as you're all aware, we did appoint an alternate recently uh, to help balance out those loop months when we don't have all members available. And each term of the planning commission that's the planning commissioners that serve has been reduced from five years to four years, which is more consistent with the city council term. And they can be staggered among the members to offset the time periods that they serve. The vacancies are filled by the mayor, subject to the advice and consent of the council. And the one change the planning commissioners requested is that a removal from a member would be by the same process, subject to the advice and consent of the mayor. So this proposed ordinance tonight does include that change. It sets forth the powers and duties of the planning commission and the chair as the presiding officer, the court being necessary, and the rules and compensation for those planning commissioners. The news, the proposed appeal authority establishes the appeal authority and allows the mayor to appoint an individual who would serve as the appeal authority and even alternates if we need that to hear the the appeal cases for the city. So it wouldn't put our planning commissioners in a position where they are acting as the appeal authority. They, it would be a an appointed person. It outlines qualifications for this, the compensation and the uh, essentially what the appeal authority would do. Any questions on it or changes? The last portion actually to go over, there is a section in the revocation, the land use code eleven eighteen one hundred for revocation. This clarifies and cleans up the conditional per conditional use permit revocation process as well. This word is an option. Seems like every time I run into a run into this situation, one of your problems is we're trying to keep this up. So we have had a problem with this in the last little while. We want to make sure that we don't have a problem in the future. It was taken to planning commission. They, they studied it out, had a great discussion here, so. They bring it, she was a positive position.
So what's the criteria and or qualifications for if around three year old point, what type of type of experience or training?
If they have a pulse. So initially, the qualification reads it's an individual appointed should have qualified experience in land use and as a professional surveyor, attorney, civil engineer, educator, other land use related field. We have some great people on the market. One regarding your experience and that. We actually have, obviously seems to have an application on them for vacancy on there. So there's a lot of interest in that. Any more questions or? We ready for a motion?
Our motion, we adopt Harrisville ordinance five thirty one, land use amendments.
So. I have a motion in a second. I will call this required of this.
Point of order.
Excuse me?
Speaking.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is James Ward. I live in ten seventy three, Yerkesburg. I'm just curious if uh, this is going to be open for public comment period?
Um, not until later.
Not till after it's been adopted?
Yes. It worked.
Yeah, that seems a bit backwards.
The public hearing was held at the planning commission level. It's not held at the city council. It was held in February.
In February, okay. I didn't receive notice, so that's why I was concerned. I I was just curious because I was like, wait a minute, we're adopting something without a public comment.
No, it was in public notice and and we took public comment in February.
Okay. Did I, because I was, I've been out of state on handbooks and personal private affairs. Um, do you mind, were there any negative, were there any negative or?
There were no public comments at all.
Oh, not at all. Oh, okay. And so then this is, I'm just curious, and this was on recommendation from the planning commission then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's I was just curious because I I just wanted to make sure that that's where that was. I was just curious how that went. So thank you very much for the information.
Okay, you're welcome. I believe we were beginning your call. Okay, Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item C, discussion possible action without Harrisville resolution twenty two dash oh four, which is PTIF user update. Do you just want to take this, Jimmy? Sure. So this is an update to our public treasures investment fund. As you know, we've had changes in our staffing and we added Jessica not too long ago, month or two ago. And now we need to add our new city treasurer Jill Hunt to the PTIF fund. So it's a formality that they is required for us to fill out a resolution and have the rise signature sent in. So those users are authorized to make changes to that, the city's account. If you want, is there any more discussion on that? All right. Uh, a motion please.
I'll make a motion when we adopt uh, resolution twenty two dash zero four, the PTIF user.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Thank you. Roll call on this, Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. That takes care of our business items. Now we'll move on to item number six, which is public comment. And this is where anyone is open to come to the podium. Uh, state your name, please, and then give a, you know, a brief of this to state your concerns.
Adam Mayor, esteemed council members. Uh, my name is Carlos Ayalar. I live on twenty one fifty north. I was like, you take some consideration of the heavy truck traffic on that road. Uh, due to the, the the development just north of us. Uh, it's a very narrow road. We have these side dumps that are coming through. They're at twenty five minute intervals. And I don't think it's a, it's very safe. It's a high they like to take the disoride junior either. A lot of pedestrian traffic and they come through, they back up and they go through, I would recommend that they go to two thousand north and come through if possible, because that's a much wider road. Uh, with that, you take that consideration. And secondarily, I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that over by the, by Orion?
Yes.
What's your name, Mrs. Justin?
It would be the copperwoods development. They just started a great ground this week. Um, we are asking them to go down twenty one fifty, so they're not impeding two thousand traffic. As we know, the two thousands one of our already most congested roads in the city. Twenty one fifty is a lot lighter traffic and they have the access right on to west, they're to high rated nine off the traffic line. But if they don't have that on two thousand.
Then we'll have to keep that in mind. But I know it's, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll discuss that at staff meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the public comments and move on to item number seven. This is where we uh, we've talked about having the four mile district, this four mile special services district report. And because of that, we are now going to convene as the board of the that's okay. Uh, so now I just have to state that we are now convening as the board of the board of the four mile special services district. So within that, we are discussion, there's a discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville resolution number twenty two dash oh five, which is accepting a petition for annexation of property into the four mile special services. So as you're aware, a year ago, a little more than a year ago, the city created the four mile special service district. And with the intent of providing secondary water services where it's not available through Pine View. Uh, when we approved the Warren Hollow subdivision and we tried to annex in, the counties were requiring us to go through the formal process of the annexation. So we uh, received a petition by the developer, Patrick Burns, on February twenty fourth to petition the annexation of Warren Hollow subdivision into the four mile special service district. We will, it the petition meets the requirements outlined in state law for the petition. And as we accept the petition tonight, then we will certify that petition and begin the And as we accept the petition tonight, then we will certify that petition and begin the annexation waiting period, the forty-five days will hold a public hearing. And we will receive public comment. We'll notice all property owners within five feet of that to receive public comment on the annexation of that property into the four mile special service district. Once we complete the annexation process, which you're familiar with, we did over the summer with the own property up from Montgomery Farms. With the same process, just to annex that into the four mile special service district. So that they can assess the appropriate utility fees and potentially taxes if, if the if that was necessary, we're hoping to be able to cover the cost of the taking over those facilities. The developers are installing the secondary water systems as they go through the development and then the city will take over the maintenance of those at the final acceptance of the subdivision. If you have any questions regarding that annexation, where it is, only lots, where we have the developer here, it's available to answer any questions. Okay. Guys have done your homework tonight. All right, no more discussion. We need a motion, please.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero five, accepting a petition for annexation property into the four mile special services district.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. I need a roll call on this. Councilmember Lovett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lovett?
Yes.
Thank you. Two minutes. Now do I have to say that we're reconveniing the public? Okay, reconvenia for council for Harrisville City. So on to item eight, we might just switch a little. Take the path of another one. We're on item eight, which is mayor council follow-up. So item A, we'll turn back over to Jenny. This is the Open Meetings Act, nondiscrimination training. Actually, Mayor, with your permission, you might if we reverse the order at least. We can talk about the other two and then do the training last, if there's some public interest. Okay. Are there discussions? Thank you. Sure, I'll put that to the end then. Just a reminder then that Utah legal cities and towns has their conference, April twentieth to twenty-second, St. George. I, I do try and go to that. I think it's very informative. It helps train us, it helps know about a lot of things going on, so I would encourage you to do that. If you are interested, you need to deal with, Jenny, are you taking the reservation? Absolutely can. If you want, we, we probably need to make hotel reservations quite quickly if you plan to attend. I'll let her know that she'll, not only get your hotel reservation, she will reserve. For the, council registered for you for the conference.
Over those dates, yeah.
Yeah. For a hotel pretty, pretty soon. Oh, yeah. You can also have your hotel and then council that later. It's, it's usually the Wednesday evening, all day Thursday, half of the Friday. Okay, I'm going to, onto item C, which is the Children's Justice Center funding discussion. We had last month, okay, just last month, the director came and spoke to us, spoke to us about that. We had kind of a small discussion on that. They have asked us, and I'll just review a little bit, they have asked us for our other funds to help fund the new building that the Children's Justice Center needs. From my understanding, unless the county has pledged money to do this, unless every city is going to do it, they are not wanting to do it. I know North Morgan has said yes, Washington Terrace has said yes, Roy City has said no. Their concern with Roy City was that, and I didn't understand this, but Mayor Dandrick Lomond is usually very, he, he does his homework. So this is from what he's, we had a discussion as mayors a little while ago, a couple weeks ago, and he had said that his major concern, what his council could not vote for was that when we as individual cities will be paying for this building and then the county will turn it over to a private and then, then we have no control over what's happened to the money that we have been. So they, they voted no on that. I'm not going to take a formal vote, but I want to know what direction you want me to take. It was on Weecox, the Weber Area Council government. We meet once a month. It was on there. I chanted to discuss yesterday. It's been put back on. Not sure of the reasoning on that, but I think it just because there was not enough time for all the cities to meet and but I can't see if Roy City is saying no, what what difference that makes in as far as I understood, once it stopped the whole project. Apparently this is like a five million dollar project. The county's going to put in one million and it is mandated by the state to do. They want our share to be around forty thousand. That we have always had us. Even going back as far as I can remember, we've always had a as an unenforced policy or a written policy that we don't just give out money. It's, we are very conscious of the money that we have, that all systems do. There's, there's a lot of good projects that we could give it to, but we have just not done that before. So anyway, with that information, I don't know if you've heard of the presentation before. What are your thoughts?
The fact that they give the building away, that was the number one thing that said that. But the thing is, personally, if the state is going to make this a mandate, then they should kick in. And so my, my answer is no. But I think that's wrong if they put squeeze on us, but they're not willing to put it, so.
Well, moving into privacy, I'm really concerned about that, where it comes to being moved in private. Because I'm not very, especially having the discussion that's set on by issues, yeah.
I felt like they're trying to, they're holding us hostage under this whole thing. Didn't feel right.
Throw a little bit different shade on it. I, I know like the the way they approached it, it feels like we're being bullied and I'm going to kind of blow my back on such stuff, but I've been running the police department for twenty-five years and having worked closely with the Children's Justice Center. We don't have the type of investigative resources to do that specialized kind of interviewing with, with child victims. And it puts our, it puts our department in an interesting light. I don't know how we're just going to approach it. My whoever doesn't use that, and I don't think the county attorneys are going to file the cases because it's too easy to lead a victim and not know it when you're not a trained forensic child investigator. So arguing it from an investigative standpoint and for a child victim here in Harrisville. I feel like we're in a rock and hard place. It, it's totally necessary. I don't like the way they're approaching it with us. It's kind of like don't like being bullied. So kind of I'm the same way, each element here, but, but I don't want to put our police department.
And I think every city, every mayor was of the same mind, but we know that this is a it's a need. It's not a want that there's coming to us for. It's a need. At the same time, the county has fifty million dollars. They pledge one million to do this. It's a five million dollar project and now the CJC was only asking for two and a half. If you put that in perspective on the percentage of the money that they were willing to pledge out of their fifty million, one million versus the money that we're getting and what the percentages of ours that they were asking. That's quite a big difference. Maybe if they have done that differently. They also said that they've got ARPA money, that they wanted the cities to apply for grants to receive some of that ARPA money. Instead of doing that, it's, 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 what do you call those? Showings? Thank you. So let's just have the county take care of the county thing. And even if they took possession of that, I can't understand why they wouldn't do that if it's a need. And they would take that instead of asking for our money, put it back in there and then release some ARPA back to us. When, I don't know if we'll even get it. And I, that's that's kind of a hard thing to do too, to to say, yes, we won't give you anything, but we want money back. But if they take care of this, I don't have a problem.
Right, but again, I think that we need to look at it this way too. The county has the money, the county can put the money out. It's not that big of a deal and they've got that much sitting in there. And something to me isn't right. And then when he said we're going to turn the building over here, I, I know we need it. But I think we need to, we need to put the brakes on it and we need to drive light through it because something something is not right in this whole process. I'm sorry, the camera's not paying attention. Certain things and we'll go with that, but I think we need to, we need to, just as a city. I don't see us putting that kind of money in and then watch it just disappear.
Well, can I refer you back to two years ago when they took all the CARESAP money? And, you know, we kept ours here. They spent all the other counties' CARESAP or all this other cities in the county CARESAP money. And now they're coming for more is what it feels like to me.
Yeah.
And they gave away a lot of that to nonprofits then. Why did they see that this was in kind of, you can see the future, but maybe it's, it's putting a, it's putting the CJC in a difficult position. I really feel like that. Yeah.
It seems like we need to fill a few more wires beyond, you know.
See what's going on.
Yeah, they'll do an effective plan B if enough people start blocking.
I think so. I think they, maybe they're seeing as cities will do this. I've had we're talking to our police chief and he was concerned about this. He had said that the numbers that they're assessing is terrible. I don't know whether that was the first one, but that's not what my assessment of it is. And even in other cities, they said, Wilmington has a great one. We will not just leave up all the kids. We'll go, we'll take the part. So there's a plan B. They do not want it affect right now. This, and the county apparently in that moment, that's why they want to do this. There's, I think there's stuff that we don't have to, Jenny. So to your point, Max, that there's no question that the importance in the area of using the CJC. And the unfortunate part of this whole discussion is that it feels like they're pitting the cities against using a resource that we really need. And it's, who's going to, it's going to punish the children in the process. And, and no one wants the police department to be in a situation where they can't use the resources that are available to protect these children or to give them the help and the, and the services that they need. It's unfortunate that the counties decided to use this to do whatever the, the process is that they're proposing here. But the amount that they're asking of cities exceeds the amount they're willing to put forward themselves. So there's a question there as to why, if they're not willing to put up the percentage they're asking the cities when we have even more limited ARPA funds than they do, if they have it available to the mayor's point. Don't give as much grant money to the cities, but rather pay for the CJC center that benefits everyone. And then disperse the remaining funds out through the grant. But there's no question to the value that the CJC brings and, and the manatee to be able to use them. It's just an unfortunate situation that they put the city, all of the cities in. Lot of discussion over this, with all the cities and their councils. Lot of, maybe it feels like there's a lot of details that are actually given to this. So with your recommendation, will this discussion offer forms of recommendation that we are not going to come next?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I need to know. Thank you for your help. This discussion. One more, I, before I go, I just wanted you guys do you like your TV over there?
We can see everything. We can see the small stuff.
For putting that up, that's hearing, hopefully. See that and I hope that's helpful to the public now. We can turn that a little bit, so little things. So that's credit to Cynthia and Dennis in organizing that. And that is just even today's efforts to get that available for you. But it, I think it will make a big difference. Hopefully the public can also, we're heavy on the side that it should see that, but the TV crowds. All right, we'll move back to item A. This is the Open Public Meetings Act. And this is where you require training every year. So Jenny's going to do this. You are more than welcome to stick around, but that's the last thing that I, that you did. It's, it's really interesting. That's what we have to you. It doesn't mean you have to stay. All right, we'll turn it over to Jenny. Okay. We're going to kind of bust through these slides as quickly as we can, right? So this is an annual training of the open meetings. And the reason for the open meetings are procedurally to give due process and to do, give due process requires people to be given notice and an opportunity to be heard. The American public policy and democracy favors openness with meetings. We try our best to be transparent and open with all of our meetings and meet those requirements. In state code fifty-four four one oh two, the public policy, the legislator finds, the legislature finds and declares the state its agencies and political subdivisions exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. So you're conducting the business of the people. It is the intent of the legislature or that the state its agencies and its political subdivisions take their actions openly. So we, we make all of our decisions with the public in it open and conduct your deliberations openly like we just experienced in talking about the challenges the city faces and, and having those discussions in front of the public. The presiding officer of the public body shall ensure that the members of the public body are provided with this annual training on the requirements. So there are five parts to the Open Public Meetings Act. Part one is meetings. Part two is the public notice. Part three is the minutes and records and part four is closed meetings and part five is enforcement. So the meetings themselves are held in public. We talked briefly about that. The public notice requirements are met by the city recorder by posting on the Utah Public Notice website, posting at physical locations and notifying the standard examiner of our meetings and the items on the agenda. The, the minutes and records of the meetings are permanent and the written records of the meetings are closed meetings are only to be held under certain circumstances and we'll go through those as well as the enforcement in future slides. So the question is, what, what is a meeting? What do we consider a meeting? Is the convening of a public body with a court present and it includes workshops or executive sessions? It includes meetings held in person or now that after COVID, we've experienced our first and hopefully not a, a standard for the future, but holding electronic meetings as well, where we've adopted a resolution to do that so that we can participate in meetings electronically. Where the purpose of the, of the meeting is discussing receiving comments or acting upon a matter where the public body has jurisdiction or advice through power. A meeting is open to the public unless it is a closed meeting allowed under the state law. And the public meetings may only be held at city hall and some exemptions apply. We have to public notice if the meeting is not going to be held at city hall, which we've had to in the past to hold public hearings that are large for the golf course, things like that. We've had to hold it around junior high so that we can accommodate the public's need to be part of that meeting. What is the public body? The city council, the planning commission, or any other administrative advisory executive or legislative by the city that is created by statute, rule or council resolution? So in our code, we have a requirement that developers come to our project management meeting to tend to discuss any developments. So we public notice those meetings. They're held publicly and we provide agendas and information for the public for those. So we, we here at Harrisville notice three meetings, all held in the same week, except busy meeting week for us here as staff. It has two or more members. It spends or is supported by taxes and has authority to make decision, public decisions. And we obviously have some discussion. And we obviously had some discussion about that this evening as well. What a meeting is not is a chance, meeting is social gathering or training. In the past, we've done some trainings in a more casual environment, but many of you participated in for this training. But this year, as we're meeting monthly, we're just trying to move forwards for meeting that meet tonight. So public notice of meetings, we kind of touched base on that. In January, every year, we publish a notice that has the annual meeting schedule. At least twenty-four hours before the meetings, we post an agenda that has topics with reasonable specificity. So we, we list them as discussion, possible action items, so that those items that you need to take action on and, and make sure that we meet, the, the reasonable specificity. The date, time of meeting, place of the meeting. And a topic raised by the public that is not on the agenda may only be heard if the presiding officer allows. And no action can be taken on an item that is not posted on the agenda. Agendas must be posted, provided to the local media, the standard examiner, and we publish it on the public notes website. Emergency meetings are allowed if a natural disaster or such circumstances occur or a similar situation if the city needed to be. We do have special authority to hold emergency meetings if we have, heaven forbid, some sewer issue or something like that. The written minutes of the open meetings shall be kept. The, they list the time, date, place of the meeting, the names of the members present, and also if any one of you are absent. The substance of all matters proposed, discussed, or decided, which may include the summary of comments made by the members of the public body, a record, uh, individual member of each vote taken by the public body. You notice that certain items on the agenda, we post such roll call votes that are required. Anytime you expend funds, public funds, or pass a resolution or ordinance, you have to do that by a roll call vote. The name of each person who is not a member of the public body and upon recognition of the public presiding member, provided testimony or comments, brief substance of testimony or comments provided by the public. Any other information a member requests to be entered into the minutes so long as it actually happened. And that's been something that I've gotten extensive training on. It's hard when you know a lot of background about it, information on an item on the agenda, to make sure the minutes just include the discussion points that you guys actually take place. So it's kind of a mental training exercise for taking notes in meetings, because you may know the history and want to put that in there, but you, you're just taking the record of the meeting, to be clear. The record of an open meeting shall be a complete and unedited record from commencement through adjournment, be properly labeled or identified with the date, time, and place of the meeting. The city shall make pending minutes available to the public within thirty days. We typically have those right away, uh, draft minutes, but we are mostly approving those minutes and posting them after our, our next meeting, the next month. We post the approved written minutes of an open meeting to the Utah Public Notice website and make them available to the public here at city hall. We also post them to our website. And any public material distributed at the meeting. Our packet is actually required to be maintained as a public record now. So you'll notice our, we have three spots on our website, one for the agenda, one for the actual packet, and one for the minutes. The pack, packet is actually kept as a permanent record now as well. Uh, within three business days after holding the open meeting, we make an audio recording of the open meeting available to the public as well. Those are becoming quite large to provide to the public when we get requests. Not often, but we do have to make accommodations for that. All are part of the open meeting, may be independently recorded by any person in attendance. If the recording doesn't interfere with the conduct, so someone were to come, sit and listen to our meeting, we record it, but if they want to record portions of it, so long as it doesn't disrupt us being able to keep, take our, or conduct the business, we, we authorize that, or they're allowed to do that. The written minutes or recording of an open meeting that are required to be retained permanently shall be maintained in or converted to a format that meets long-term record storage requirements. And a recording of a site visit or traveling tour is not required if there's no phone interaction. So in the past, we've done field trips to Central Weaver Sewer, wanted us to Water District. Those types of things don't happen to be part of the permanent record, other than we've noticed to the public that we're going to meet, convene, and verify that to attend. And we also put that in the record that you went on a field trip to those locations. Written minutes shall be the official record of the action taken at the meeting. So there's certain circumstances where allowed to have closed meetings. A closed meeting may only be held if a quorum's present and two-thirds of the city council about to approve closing the meeting. Closed meetings can only be held for limited purposes, and no ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or acquaintance can be approved in any type of closed meeting. The open meetings minutes must reflect the reason for the closed meeting, the location of the closed meeting, and a roll call, call to enter the closed meeting. We also do a roll call to exit out of the closed meeting. And we, uh, we've noticed that on the agenda of what the closed meeting is being held for. And this one I believe if we go through, so these are the, the approved closed meeting purposes. To discuss character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining. Strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonable litigation. Strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. To investigate allegations of criminal misconduct or to discuss deployment of security personnel devices or systems. A public body may not interview a person applying to fill an elected position at a closed meeting. As you're, some of you are aware, as you were appointed members, we hold that in public's view. We interview the candidates in public, we make the decision in public. None of that takes place at a closed meeting. No record and a signed sworn statement at the closed meeting is for. So there, these two options, we do not keep a record at all for if we're talking about the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, or if you're deploying a security personnel for obvious reasons. You don't want people to know the exact locations or what type of security measures you have in place. We don't keep a record of that. Any of the other items, we do keep a record, but it's a protected record and not available just to be released to the public. The enforcement, the Utah Supreme Court interprets the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act to ensure the purposes of openness. And exceptions are strictly construed. The, it provides that any final action taken in violation of the act is void by the court. And it states that a person who fills the city violated the act may sue to compel compliance, interpret the act based on a public body's actions. And the court may award reasonable attorney fees and court costs to the successful plaintiff who were found to do that in error. The act does not prohibit removing a disruptive person from a meeting when orderly conduct is seriously compromised. Do you have any questions on the Open and Public Meetings Act? No? Very good, we'll move on to the next, which is the non-discrimination. So, uh, the purpose and of training, and we'll go through these topics. Then every year annually, we go through the non-discrimination training. And we list out the protected classes and definitions, the governing laws and policies, and examples and explanations, and prevention policies that we have in place to protect it from workplace violence. So the purpose is to recognize what is occurring on or in the workplace, prevention of unlawful conduct and discrimination, and understanding the complaints and avoiding costly claims. So the protected classes are listed out here in a slide. Race, creed, color, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, veteran status, national origin, citizenship, disability age, pregnancy, familial status, and genetics are all protected classes under federal and state law. Discrimination means the unjust or prejudicial treatment of different categories of people or things, especially on the grounds of personal characteristics. Harassment means aggressive pressure or intimidation, and it's illegal when directed to a protected class. Harassment is also any conduct or behavior toward another person based on a protected class, which is pervasive, unwelcome, insulting, demeaning, threatening, or particularly derisive or coercive, and results in a hostile, abusive, or intimidating work environment. Pervasive means existing in or spreading through every part of something. It's ongoing, it's constantly hostile, inappropriate comments, jokes, innuendo, gestures, touching, or displaying graphic material and communication among anyone in the city, staff or council. Unwelcome means the opposite of accepting with pleasure the occurrence or presence of behavior consistently rejected, behavior welcomed at first but later rejected. Mean means to lower in character, status, or reputation, ridicule, makes to make fun of or mock, threatening, needs to cause, to feel insecure, anxious, and coercion, means to restrain or dominate by force, to compel to enact a choice. So federal and state and local laws, it shall be unlawful employment practice for an employer to discriminate against an individual with respect to compensation, terms, conditions, or privileges of employment because of a protected class status. The Equal Pay Act of nineteen sixty-three, the Age Discrimination Act of nineteen sixty-seven, the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, the nineteen seventy-eight Pregnancy Disability Amendment, and America's Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety, and amended in two thousand eight, Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act of two thousand eight, and the Utah Anti-Discrimination Act. And we also have a non-discrimination resolution that the city has adopted. So sexual harassment means sex or gender-based harassment based on queer pro quo or hostile environment. Queer pro quo means that you do something for me, I give you something. Hostile work environment means conduct to a protected class which unreasonably interferes with an individual's job or performance or creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work atmosphere. Whether or not harassment will lead to an economic job consequence includes behaviors such as stereotyping, unwanted, physical touching, targeting a protected class or an individual. Who can be a perpetrator, management employee, public, anyone, anyone coming into the city, anyone working in the city, anyone serving in the city. Who can be a victim, targeted individual, anyone in the work environment, anyone who tries to help. And how do we address harassment? We report to supervisor or to the mayor in the circumstances of an elected official or planning commissioner. What to do? These are examples and explanations, I think, that we can do and can't do. We are examples to the public. I know I take this very personally in my personal life. I know that I represent the city, whether I'm at the city working or if I'm in my personal life. I know everyone associates me with the city and my conduct with the city. You dress according to our dress code and in the policy manual. You enhance yourself and communicate with the neighbor you find that welcome and you report harassment. What we don't do is share too much personal information in the workplace, focus on comments about the body of someone else, and share inappropriate humor or display something that is offensive or inappropriate on social media, emails, texting, or messaging in the workplace. What to do if you find illegally harassed? Be familiar with our policies. We are in the process of updating our policies and procedures. We'll be bringing forward to you in the future those updates as we meet as department heads to go through our entire policy manual. We do report to the appropriate authority, be prepared to give specific information, understand confidentiality, report any type of retaliation, and cooperate with efforts to resolve the problem. Workplace violence prevention. What is workplace violence? Any act or threat of physical violence, harassment, intimidation, or other threatening disruptive behavior that occurs in the workplace. Examples, verbal abuse, direct or indirect threats, including non-herbal things, violent or extreme action, and warning signs, fascination with weapons, alcohol or drug use, severe stress, anguish over workplace issues, history of violence, psychological instability, social isolation, and declining hygiene, or personality changes. I just wanted to also add, as part of our processes and our procedures, we participate in the Previdence Mental Health Assessment Program. So every six months, the staff here, including all of our officers and our regular staff, take an assessment every six months about how we're doing mentally with our mental health, because we all have quite a lot of pressure over our, our job performances. So violence, so workplace violence prevention is to look for early indicators. Look for behaviors that are escalating, anything that obviously includes violence. And the prevention is to anticipate things, recognizing different stages, implementing security measures, intervention and reporting, and taking those precautions like blocking doors, using lights and security, applying visitor protocol, and not allowing strangers in the workplace. We work in a fairly safe environment. We have locked front doors that keep the public from being able to come back and access the employees. And we have strict VCI regulations for all of our staff, including you as elected officials, that go through the, the fingerprinting to make sure that our exposure is, is appropriate to what we see behind scenes. Managing disgruntled coworkers and patrons, just having a basic understanding of human psychology, that sometimes people, we deal with this all the time at the window, their perception is their reality. It doesn't necessarily mean the way it is, but that's how they're perceiving it, and that's how it is for them. They use, whether a person is using non-threatening posture or they're posturing up, we, um, we avoid anger, we try to keep emotion out of it and be factually based when we're helping people, avoid appearing fearful or anxious, and set an example for all those around, leading by examples to our community as well. Respond rather than react to things, be truthful and credible. My favorite quote is, if you tell the truth, you don't have to remember anything, because the truth you remember naturally. Avoid arguments, talk slow, listen, and be attentive, allow other, other people to, to vent about their frustrations. Managing disgruntled coworkers and patrons, being solution oriented. I feel like the city is very solution oriented. We try to bring the solutions to, to people. I like to have those discussions with people as we can and have the understanding of why. A lot of situations that we deal with with the public and even amongst staff is having an understanding of why we're doing things and educating people about that. Encouraging suggestions and solutions, helping correct wrongs. I wish we could say we were perfect people here working for you at HERSville City, but we make mistakes. Anytime you have humans involved, you make mistakes. We like to, to take ownership of those mistakes and correct them if we can. And then following through with communication. I think we've learned over the last two years, a lot of things that have happened in the city, that communication is really key among our, our team players here. Be aware of mental illness and reduced capacity, look for win-win resolutions, all individuals to the safe space and retain their dignity, be fair and reasonable, avoid solutions that can be construed as vengeful. And keep calm when more and others have a state plan, call for help or get counseling. We kind of have a, we, we enjoy sharing our office space with our police department. We kind of cover each other. If somebody's getting yelled at at the window, we try to bring someone, even having an officer stand behind them or being a presence there gives that person a de-escalation measure we take on staff side to help with those types of situations. And there you have it. Any questions about our non-discrimination? I, I managed to keep you all awake, barely.
You can breathe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to do that annual training for you.
Did you put those slides together?
We picked you back, but yes, we, we had some of the past, and we merged them together. That's what I, whatever here that, that historic things that we have around here.
Well, thank you to Jenice, and deliver, and we'll still do for that. We made that through, that's another annual, we didn't check that far off. Uh, we are down going to the actual public council ball with Grover. Is there anything you would want to bring up?
Well, I think what's going on in communication lines is very difficult, and I appreciate that very much. Just that you're, you're struggling now, a lot of it. Great, you know, and I say, appreciate all of the, we see in the public works and the communications there. Now, keep, not only information, but, uh, a lot of research and attention, there's some sleep damage.
Well, we lost a good man last week, uh Tyler Malrose, served on our planning commission committee and a couple of different steering committees, we put out an RFP, say for school source code, EDI, ADHOC, citizen. Sense, smart in that, and then of course chaired the the territory project. And donated the land for that. The talk of the mayor, we had his service yesterday, but this little plaque on the black post on the monument that's closest to his house says, "In memoriam, Tyler T. Malrose, Chairman, Cherokee Plan and Committee, nineteen fifty-four, twenty twenty-two." Rest in peace.
I'm really glad that we uh we dedicated that last year.
I I I mentioned it in these services yesterday, I'm so glad. I was fine with just replacing the plaque, uh you were the one that went out of the way and said we need to make a big deal out of this. I'm so glad we did.
Yeah, it was a great ceremony last year. That's great. Thank you, Max. All right, well, with that, we've had quite a lot of meetings tonight, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Will do.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, we're good.